25 point work session. Where that we are all here, right? She tailed that just like. None, two wheels for sure. We have things that are going on. The council meeting. Program. For you, right? Yeah. And then. We just. It's about the. That and it's a public. Name. Right as. Hey, first up, um, we'd like to welcome Professor. Here's visiting us from. See where she was. Amendment of the College of Natural. Flint. H D in sociology from the. And she has. Degree. And. Back to Illinois. Natural research. Says and program at Utah State University. Several months ago. Standing. Was. Survey. People had. Flint runs, I reached out to her and she's just been great to work with since then. It over to her. I think the survey was. What we. That would go up their utility billings.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for having me. It's really a pleasure to be with all of you and it's been a pleasure to work with with you folks these last few months. So let's just dive right in. It's great to have Ogden as partner here. So just a tiny bit of background. So. The concept of, I'm insane here. The concept of well being is not new. It goes back to the ancient Greeks and all the way back to. Stottle and and I take a very, very broad interpretation of well being and it's just everything that goes into making a good life, right? Now that's going to be possibly different. The bundle of things that makes up. Made for from person to person and community to community. So that's really the premise of this project is to really say, if we want to understand well being of say Utahns, we can't. That that's all same. And so we need to work within our communities to understand how that is. Communities are really the. The scale of the lived experience and we have certainly have lots of different identity attachments, but this is something, this is the scale at which I I operate and I think is important for well being. So I have addressed sing well being through an online survey research sort of approach. Online survey keeps the keeps the cost down for all of us and enables lots of communities to participate and lots of individuals to participate as well. So the project overall project goals, we've been operating since 2019 and our our project goals are really first and foremost. Carry out the land. Utah State is our land grant university in the state. And so we I take that very seriously to what we. Serve the people of Utah and more to serve the the. Planners around the state with information on the wealth. Their residents. Too often we have. Maybe for the state, but we have no idea if even. Even included in those surveys. And so I it really gives you direct data on your residents. So helping to inform local planning decisions helps your finger on the pulse of how your residents are doing and they feel about things. We obviously do some comparative research on community. And increasingly, we are working with various statewide and regional edge. The Utah. Health departments, U dot, you know, the list kind of is expanding all the time. Folks who are also. The data. Running since 2018, it's built up. Run the survey, we did four during. Twenty four. Forty. These. Alpine were kind of late coming to. Sure, you got a chance to be included, so we ran this for you guys in the fall. Across the state, across down the west, actually been out into some of our rural places, east and west as well. Your report is online on our project website, so you can check that report out and see. And and so forth. So it is something the only way we can give back to the people who take the survey. Make that the day the findings. Be available. So we do that. Survey was run, as I said, in the fall. It's partnership with you guys. The cities do. The recruiting advertising. I know best how to reach your resident. And. At work. Did a bang up job. We had 180 surveys that were usable and. Saved. All you guys use social media newsletters, emails and utility bills. I believe those are predominant ways of the survey was advertised. We also added question. Where within your city? Those were from. So we and we had pretty good representation across the. Here you can see.
You're doing great.
Thanks. Appreciate that. So it's great to have positive reinforcement as we move along. Okay, great. And so and I will refer to these districts with some of the data points. And if you wanted more on anything in specific, we could go back and do a more detailed geographic assessment. We also are try to be very transparent about our demographics because this because this is an online survey and it is what we call convenient sample. Any adult over the eighteen or over can take the survey. We want to be really clear about who we hear from and who we don't. So we heard from almost entirely full time residents, a big range of average length of residence from like a couple of months to I think ninety or something like that. Twenty two percent had lived here five years or less. So we are capturing your newcomers as well as your longstanding residents. We are pretty representative in terms of most age groups and income and gender. But we are less representative of that eighteen to twenty nine age group. That's really hard to reach. It's not unique to Ogden. It's just hard to reach those younger folks. Those without a college degree and that's a that's a classic online survey demographic that's hard to reach are Hispanic or Latino residents. Even though the survey wasn't Spanish, that's a notorious area that's challenging and renters are harder to reach. As with a community survey as well. So if you look into this future further on your report, the green dots are our survey estimates and the purple dots are what the census tells us is our best estimate of who's actually here in Ogden. So getting right into the results, personal well being in Ogden averages about a three point nine one. Seventy two percent set a four or five on a five point scale. Ogden slides in there in this with comparing to the cities of the first and second class. I haven't necessarily given you everybody here. We have that in the statewide report. But you can see Ogden's falling in a little bit lower than average. And I think it's really important to note that, and I'll show you later, well, the personal well being is highly correlated with income. Your income, I think, is about median household income of about seventy thousand and. You know, that's lower than everybody above you in this well being chart. So there is a correlation there, and I think that explains a little bit of coming in a little bit lower than average in comparison to some of these other other cities. In terms of your districts here within the city, this pattern that district four comes in at the highest. And then district three comes in second on well being and then then the second and then the fourth just the, what is that? The first district comes in fourth. Community well being always shifts a little lower than the personal well being and that does fall a little bit low here in terms of the average. Over overall. That we also look specifically at what we call domains or categories of well being. So those first ones are kind of really general, all inclusive, whatever people think makes up their well being or the community's well being. But then we go into twelve different categories. The most important of these domains or categories for the Ogden respondents are family life, mental health, physical health and living standards. The highest rated domains were family life, connection with nature, mental health and physical health. Connection with nature is rated much more highly in Ogden than in most of the other more urban cities that we work with. What we have what's called the red zone. Now, these are domains that are rated that are quite important to people, but they're rated a little lower than the average of all these domains. And then the red zone for Ogden, we have safety and security and local environmental quality. And from a deeper analysis of some of the open ended comments, when when we we had people who rated at one, two or three out of five, we asked them to tell us more. Of what's going on in terms of local environmental quality. That was a little added thing for our 2024 survey. The dominant themes in those responses and we did hear from a lot of folks on that loss of open space and nature. Air quality concerns and concerns about a lack of bike paths and and walkability issues. So those were kind of the dominant environmental things that came out for the folks that rated it a little lower than than average. Community connection is something that we have focused on in recent years. How connected do you feel to Ogden as a community? And you can see quite a bell curve here.
Can I just ask her a quick?
Absolutely.
I I'll just on that previous slide where it shows the highest rated domains is connection with nature. And so how do we square connection with nature being the highest rated domain and lack of environmental quality?
Absolutely.
Like that seems to. Conflict with each other.
There's, I think, a lot of times what people, what people are telling us is that they're they. They rate their personal connection with nature and that could be how they reach that might not necessarily even be in Ogden. They might leave Ogden to make those connections. Up in the mountains or whatever they might want to do, but the local environmental quality might be sort of within their space. We do ask them about it within. That that community. So I think that's kind of, but it is a conundrum and it is not so directly opposed in most other places like. You guys are high on connection with nature and you're considerably low on local environmental quality. So it is does present a little bit of a conundrum. I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Oh, right. So asking about this community connection, it's a lot out there in the literature as something that's really growing in concern and awareness. You have quite this bell shaped curve there. You fall sort of in the middle of the pack and quite a bit higher than some of the other bigger cities there. It is highest for it for that same district for that you have that that sort of bench community there. And then you can see how the other districts relate to this connectedness. And it turns out that it's really important because. Community connection is highly correlated with overall personal well being. The higher that that community connectedness, the higher the the overall personal well being. Same with mental health. You can see that direct correlation there. So that feeling connected to the community does pay off for folks when they have that sense of belonging, if you will. Just looking at a couple of the demographics. We do see some pretty strong correlations with age. So the the older you are in the community, the more likely you are to rate. These different things, community, personal well being, community well being and community connection a bit higher. So really strong on the personal well being. Income, as I mentioned, is pretty strongly correlated, particularly with overall personal well being and a little bit on community connectedness. You can see that that little tail comes up for those the highest of incomes. And disability, folks that say they consider themselves to have a disability do show up statistically significantly lower in terms of overall personal well being. And that's not unique to Ogden. That's across the state. Okay, so this is a lot going on in this slide. That we asked folks about their kind of recreation participation. Have you participated in any of these activities in the past twelve months? And oh my, the Ogden residents are really active. You can see how active they are in walking and biking, utilizing trails. In or near the city, recreating in parks, attending community events, gardening is really high and even non motorized recreation and and attending farmers markets. Farmers market attendance or is participation is much higher than in many places. So. And then what the big message of this is, is that if you look on the left there, you can see all of the things that the participation is correlated with. So all the effort that you as a city put into providing your parks and providing community events and city recreation programs, the people who participate in those really benefit. Their personal and community well being is often higher, their community connection is often rated higher. And so there's a real payoff for providing those services for your residents. The data is pretty clear about that. Those are pretty strong correlations. We also asked some questions about population growth and economic development. We asked folks, how would you describe the current rate of population growth in Ogden? And sixty seven percent said it's too fast. Now, your population growth rate over the last ten years is about four point five point four percent. That's not particularly high. So we have a discrepancy here between the rate of population growth and that public perception of growth. And so that can be a communication point of entry for discussing. How to deal with growth is actually, we're not growing as fast, but we need to think about why we feel this way and what we can do about that. So we asked about how would you describe the current pace of economic development and we get a much different picture. We get a variety of responses. Some say too slow. Some say just right. Some say too fast. And so there's a mixture there. Well, this year we went a little bit further to as to say for those people who are just right, we let them go on in the survey. If they said too slow, we said, what would you like to see more of in terms of economic development? If they said too fast, we said, well, what is too fast? Those that said it was too slow, mentioned more the common most dominant, we have a team of students, they they go through all of the comments. And we code them and score them. And the things that came up for high in terms of too slow is retail options, restaurants. The need to revitalize empty lots and employment opportunities. And those who said it was too fast talked about the growth of the burst in housing development. A need for consideration of residents, concerned about just crowding, just feeling kind of constrained and traffic. We also asked a whole slew of concerns. We've had some of these for years and then cities have added some over the years. And so this is kind of a eclectic bunch of concerns. That we've been looking at for the over the years and there over over three quarters of the respondents indicated a moderate or a major concern. And ten things, air quality at the top, water supply right there with it, public safety, water quality, homelessness, open space and green space, school safety, which is something you all added. Traffic, affordable housing and opportunities for youth. The the from a half to three quarters of the respondents added a number of other things to that, concern about the Great Salt Lake. Access to healthy and quality food, rec opportunities, climate change, trails and paths, employment opportunities, shopping opportunities, suicide, high for one of the Wasatch Front communities actually. And social and emotional support. So now, not all of the things on this list or in the survey altogether are things that the city has a mandate to address, right? So we're addressing things, we have things in the survey that go beyond usual typical cities mandate. And yet we just included that for points for other folks that are are interested in that county health departments, other environmental agencies and so forth. But there you have the portfolio of concerns. We asked people.
Hold on a minute. Watch down the screen.
Oh. My apologies. I need to have eyes in the back of my head. Do just wave if I need to stop again. We asked people what do they value most about living in Ogden? They talk about the people, the culture and the diversity. Unique to Ogden. We don't usually hear those responses in other places. So you have something really unique going on here. They do talk about recreation and this is that connection with nature, I think, the access to trails, the the nature and the beauty in the surrounding area. We ask what could be done to improve well being in Ogden. We hear a lot about transportation, traffic, roads. The the growth and development concerns that we saw in the development question, housing affordability, cost of living. You know, the homelessness or unhoused sort of issues prominent in people's minds. We also always ask a catchall question about, is there anything else you'd like to tell us about well being, your well being or well being in Ogden? And they do mention again, public transportation, that, you know, rising property taxes, concerns that rises up there, enforcement of of laws and regulations. And I've come up as well.
Too much enforcement or not enough?
I don't, I mean, I don't know. You'll have to. So. I can't, I can't tell you. I haven't read them all. But what I can tell you is that we did provide the open comments in a report and it is like, I think, a hundred and fifty pages of. Comment, all the raw comments, we don't edit them in very small font. So it's tons. It's thousands of thousands of of responses. So it's tons, it's thousands of, thousands of, of responses on, to all these six different open ended questions. You, you know, you have to have kind of a stiff upper lip and spine when you read them, I think, from a city leader perspective, but there's a lot of great information in there. And if you're feeling a little down in some of the comments, just go back to what do people value? Because you've got page after page of page of things that they love about Ogden. So don't forget where that is in the report when you take a look, if you haven't already. You guys also added an additional question about attendance in a public, uh, community events. And about half the respondents had been to the Union Station event, 41%, the amphitheater event, and just over a third had been to the art stroll. So we give you a little bit of feedback there. Can't tell you, of course, how widely representative this is of the city because it is a convenient sample, but we are pretty representative across those different demographics, as we mentioned. And so I thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
That, that was a lot. Thanks, Dr. F. I'm sure we have questions.
I just have one quick question and I know it's all the way back on the demographic slide, but I just noticed we didn't have a huge response for renters. And a large population of Ogden is renters. So I was just curious if that was kind of normal, um, in your experience.
Very normal. Yes, you do have a high population of renters that is high in comparison to many other places at about 40%. And we heard from about, what is that, about 10%? 10% of our respondents were renters, so they are underrepresented. And they're, they're just really tough to reach in terms of community surveys.
I'm just curious.
Of course.
I'm going to follow up on that. Does that say anything about renters in a community? Is there anything underneath that that, um, is, is known?
It would be interesting to look at, and I haven't here, whether that sense of community connectedness is lower for them. We did look at it in one other community by request and it was lower. Again, I haven't done that for Ogden, I could do it. That would be my guess is that they, they don't sort of have that, that feeling of having a stake in the community as much as a homeowner does. But it could be also that maybe a lot of your renters might be in that age 18 to 29 age group and we have trouble me, re, reaching them. And so it could be a double whammy.
It also could be that they don't pay the water bill.
True.
Or if they're younger, they might be getting it electronically or something, so they may not have seen it.
Yeah.
True. 780 respondents in the survey, is that considered significant statistically?
Because we didn't do a proportionate sampling process, I wouldn't go there. But I, this is what I use to tell you how representative it is. So that's not a direct answer to your question. I would take it pretty much to the bank because I think the confidence interval with this number is high. And then that, um, is also with this kind of representation across incomes and ages, we're getting a really good, good sample, if you will. But whether or not it's statistically representative, we didn't do a proportionate sample, so it's, I don't want to overstep my bounds.
Yeah, no, that makes, that makes sense to me. And I did, I read a bunch of the responses to questions the other night. I, I just got kind of hooked into it and it's fascinating what our community has to say. It's, and there are some things that are really opposed to one another. And the green space thing, in reading some of the comments, I kind of read that as land that's vacant that once was, had something on it, is being built on again. Uh, and that was the loss of green spaces. We're not giving up parks or anything or tearing into the hillside with development. It's, it's, it's kind of related to the growth thing. And I think the growth thing is related to the apartment buildings is perceived as growing population, even though we really haven't.
It does come up, you know, I've done a lot of surveys in my career and, um, I've never seen the use of open comments more than maybe 20% on a really salient topic. Uh, I think Ogden is somewhere around 65 or 70% of respondents filled in these questions. So they have a lot to say. The, and that's, that's actually a testament to the connections. I mean, they're not apathetic, right? Then they want, they want to connect to you as city leaders. Other questions? A, a lot of the cities and towns that we have worked with over the years have done this multiple times. And then they have trend data that they can look at. If they have a big thing happening in their community, then they can track that over time. We, if we can find the funding to keep going, we will do another survey in early 2026. And so, yeah, I mean, if you have the ear of your legislators or your deep pocketed, you know, friends, we are still looking for funding to keep this project alive so we can keep the costs really low. Uh, I believe that y'all paid less than maybe $1,300 to do this survey out of sequence. And I typically like survey, you know, consulting firms will charge you 20, $30,000 to do a community survey. Now this wasn't entirely tailored to your community, but we do allow you the chance to ask a handful of questions for your residents that are specific to your city. So if we can do this again, I hope to find the funds so that you don't have to pay anything, but I'm not sure that that's going to happen. We'll have to see what happens.
Will you reach out to us?
Of course. We'll let you know one way regardless.
I do have one question, additional question. I'm very interested on this graphic here about the religious.
Oh, yes.
Reporting.
Yes.
Could you share a little bit of insight there?
Yeah, we have nothing to compare it to, right? So we don't have something like the census that we can, we can sort of say this is closer, far from the, but it did indicate that you had, um, you, you, the largest proportion of survey respondents did not identify with a religion. And that is remarkably high compared to every other city or town that we have surveyed, including some of the ones with, that do also have Latter Day Saints on the low side. We, we usually see the other religion higher, but here we do, it is somewhat of a unique signature in the Ogden data. Now, again, we don't know how representative this is of the city. You guys would know better whether this sort of seems to reflect, uh, your community or not.
Still.
But it is striking. And there are, there are some religious differences. They didn't show up as clearly here where we have a larger Latter Day Saint population. We often see their wellbeing higher. Um, then their concerns for certain things like local environmental quality a little bit lower. That's usually the big statistical finding. But whereas they're a little lower in the, in the sample of respondents, that trend didn't show up in Ogden.
I, I guess I do have a question. I, I debated whether it was a relevant question or not, but, you know, we, we do live in a broader community. I mean, Ogden is a little chunk of a, of a county, for instance. And so we have a lot of neighboring cities that, that, that develop much differently than Ogden has.
Absolutely.
And, you know, a lot of the results from what your survey was, was, you know, density and have closed in and environment and some of those kinds of things where some of our neighboring cities, you know, don't want to have anything less than an acre building lot and some of those kinds of things. And so I, I guess what, what other communities do does affect us because we allow things that they don't.
Absolutely, and they utilize your services that they're not providing.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And I, I was wondering if you, if any of your survey results, I, I gotta believe that they affect.
I think they do. I don't necessarily have data to support that because we don't have outside people commenting on Ogden or Ogden commenting on outside places. But we can't help but think that reactions to things like population growth or economic development or other things aren't affected by their broader landscape that they live in, right? People are commuting, people are traveling, they don't just, they're, they don't, nobody lives in the bubble of their own city or town. And so we, it's got to affect things. And we're hoping in the next survey to actually get at a little more of that. We did ask people about, um, how frequently do you, there's other questions in the report that I haven't gotten to, um, and for the interest of time, but about where do you go, um, for your frequent activities outside, um, of Ogden? So I can follow up, but that's in your, it, we can get that to you. And then also, um, you know, how frequently do you leave for things? And, and your residents aren't leaving an inordinate amount for things. Some communities don't have a grocery store, so they are leaving a lot for health services. You folks are pretty well supported here, but it doesn't get at those interactions with people outside the community. Uh, and we're well aware of that. Yes. Okay, I've taken up a lot of your time. I'm happy to answer questions. And as, as time goes by, don't, just shoot me an email and I'll do what I can to provide the data for you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
You bet. Take care. Appreciate it.
We'll have a lot to talk about in our next five years. With that, we have, um, just looking through here, sorry, um, Ed, great, sorry, I'm.
Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here at the request of, of Ron White. He's the, the son of Marshall N. White. He gave the suggestion of having the field house of, of Marshall White Center named after Officer Lyte. A little bit of background on Officer Lyte. He was, he was born here in Ogden, attended Taylor Elementary, attended Mount Fort Junior High, graduated from Ogden High and he also was a Weaver State graduate. As, as we were well aware, he was, he was killed in the line of duty here, serving in Ogden. I'll let Ron, who's online, uh, say a few words. I know he's wanted to, to say, as he's the one that came up with this suggestion and request.
Hello. Nice to be with the council this evening. Thank you for considering and, and honoring, Officer Lyte. He's part of a unique group of people, um, who, uh, who, uh, happened to sacrifice their lives in the line of duty. And he has earned, for that, he has earned the respect of all the citizens of Ogden and indeed our nation. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, give a shout out to, to my family, uh, my fallen officer family. And, uh, honor Officer Lyte by, um, naming the field house after him. And I think that's, uh, the least that we can do to honor his sacrifice. Thanks, Ed, for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron. I, I know when Ron originally came up with the suggestion, I don't think there was a dry eye in the, in the room when he, when he gave the, the, the suggestion first. I think the words he used at that time, it'd be an honor and an honor of my family if you guys named the, the field house after Officer Lyte. So, um, with that, I don't know if there's any questions that regarding this?
I just want to address Ron. Ron, this is Sean Myers, Councilman here on Ogden City Council. We just send our greetings to you and your family and our respect. And, and this is an amazing honor that you've brought forward to our city council, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
The only comment that, and I've said this before, is I was kind of hoping to hang onto that Lyte, name for the field house up in the north end of town, if we can ever pull that off. But this is certainly an appropriate, uh, appropriate request and, and a, and a very kind gesture on your behalf. And certainly that would be considered, so.
Thank you.
Please don't let that stop you.
Thanks, Ron. Any questions?
Thank you.
So in case there's any issues, uh, this is scheduled for, uh, April 1st for consideration. All right, we'll turn the time over to Steve Burton to talk about, residential accessory buildings in a very loud video apparently that goes along with it.
Yes. Let's see, uh.
We'll be handing out the earplugs here and.
Yeah. I think, I think Brandon will be able to turn that back down for that video that will come up. Awesome. Well, uh, good afternoon, council. It's good to be with you up here, I would say. I'm so excited to speak to you, I, I can barely contain my excitement. I'll, uh, I'll see myself out. Give you a minute there. That's right, that's right. So back in February, the council office, uh, we received a council member initiative from council member Richie about shipping containers. Uh, and the, the specifically, the initiative is to look at expanding the current land use codes to allow shipping containers to be used as residential accessory buildings. I included this image here, that's, um, one from a, 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 a manufacturer that has a whole gallery of pictures on their website and we, we got permission to, to use some of theirs. But it's, it's kind of trendy right now, you've probably seen this around. I know at some of the land use conferences I've been to, um, that's been a topic of, you know, how do cities deal with this trend? Are we able to, do, do, should it be allowed, should not be allowed? And you can see in this image, someone's put some siding and tried to make it look like, uh, this is a, you know, it's, it's a shipping container basically in someone's backyard. I think it's probably an office or a, um, you know, it could even be a, some kind of accessory dwelling unit. Could be. So the, to the council rules and norms, um, talk about what, what, what happens with these initiatives. And just to remind you, um, basically what, when one is submitted, um, it will be brought to work session within 45 days. Then the council has the opportunity to discuss in, in work session. So what I'll do is I'll present some general high level, uh, information about converting shipping containers into structures. And feel free to ask questions, um, throughout as I go through these slides. And I believe after council member Richie will, will have some things to say to, to gauge the council's interest. So to start out, you've probably seen, um, shipping containers on freighter ships like this and on the back of, uh, trucks. And I guess, as you might imagine, their normal intended use is to carry cargo, usually through long distances. There also, you probably heard the terms, um, cargo containers, um, and Conex boxes. So on the, on the left, here's what they, one, I guess this one probably looks newer. It's what they look like up close, the typical size, you were looking at, you know, eight and a half feet wide by, you could, they could be, a smaller one is 10 feet deep. It goes to 20 or even 40 feet, and I'm sure there's others, but those are the kind of the standard sizes. Let's see. Let me make sure I didn't miss anything here. The, yeah, so the way they're also, I'll just point out the way they're constructed. They're basically, there's four steel posts and corten steel, um, on the sides and the tops. So they're, they're really pretty strong structures. Before I continue, I'll also mention as, as part of our preparation with this initiative, one of the things we did is we met with, um, planning and I guess I'll Barton here. Yeah, we met with planning and, um, I, so I thank Barton and Jared. And we also met with, um, building as well to just kind of understand what might be some of the, the hurdles or, or things to look at as, as we discuss this initiative. And so glad that they're here in case we have questions. Uh, I wanted to put together, uh, just a couple of things. And as, as, as we go throughout pros and cons, maybe you can decide what you think is a pro or what you think is a con. It's kind of a choose your own adventure situation, but, um, so containers, they're very sturdy, as you might imagine, they're, they're intended to be stacked like several high, like we saw in that, that picture of that freight ship. And in the, the context of, um, building code and, uh, things like wind, wind and snow load, my, my understanding is, um, it's kind of the standard shipping container will meet those requirements because it is a really rigid structure and they, they're really designed to be left out outdoors for a long time. And, um, let's see here. Uh, I include this image on the right just to show that it's not necessarily a, a pro or a con, that they can be stacked. But, um, this is a, this one's actually up at Powder Mountain. And, uh, the, you can, I, it's funny that they put a little note on the top of it to kind of disguise it, I guess. Maybe it's not a shipping container, it's a snowdrift test structure, but. But I may or may not know the the planner who approved the permit for this one. But I think that just shows you the the rigidity of them. I guess I I think a pro could be that they are pretty affordable and accessible. Containers, I think they can be more accessible to, you know, residents and homeowners than than new construction in certain cases, as you might imagine. Sometimes if you're building an outbuilding, it can take months to get on a waiting list. And if you don't want to wait that long, it it might be easier just have a container delivered to you. And there also, it would take less time to have that shipped than to have a new stick build from lumber building. So most most containers can be delivered, as I mentioned, to a to a property typically within a few weeks. And then I guess I would say another pro could be that, you know, if it's if it's allowed, it it provides another option to residents and landowners. It can be, maybe you could see it as expanding that list of land use allowances. And then the last one for the pro list is that the containers, this, I think state code calls them, I believe it calls them Conex boxes. That they've they've, the allowance for them has recently been added to state code and also some building codes because it's been so popular that there are some allowances for them to be used as as accessory buildings. So talking about the cons, I guess, a few things to note about the containers is they you've probably seen some that look like this one. They can be unsightly. That Corten steel that they're made out of. It's very sturdy. The thing about it is it's weather treated to make it non corrosive. And what that does is it it actually makes it in about six months to a year, rust starts to build on it to prevent it from prevent the metal from corroding. And that makes it so it's kind of, it doesn't always look great if you just leave, you just have a bare container like that. I would say another thing to note is they're not buildings. So there's a little bit of retrofitting that's involved in making it a building. It can be kind of like a square block and a round hole situation. Again, this is one I pointed out, this could be a pro or a con, depending on how you look at it, but it could be delivered quickly. And in some cases, you may not want it to be delivered super quickly if people haven't gotten the proper permits for it.
Just a real quick question. I, so at one point in time, my understanding was the the paint that was used. Maybe lead paint. Do we know anything about what's painted on the inside or the outside?
I I don't have any information about that. I would I would imagine that there's that there's enough regulation currently. I would just assume that they're probably not lead paint right now, but I I'd be someone I have to look.
Depending on maybe where they come from.
Right.
Yeah. Or, yeah, how old they're.
So this is going to show you what the current city land use code allows for containers. So they're allowed, but they're required to be enclosed by an approved accessory building. So I just drafted this image to kind of just show you what that looks like. Obviously, so if somebody really wanted to, they probably wouldn't build something that big unless maybe they wanted to put two in there. But again, the initiative, the idea behind this initiative is to to discuss expanding so that they could be their own standalone standalone structures. Yeah.
So so where these things could be standalone and they have to be enclosed, there's a difference between temporary structures and permanent structures as far as where it fits in the setbacks and stuff. I guess the overbuild around that would be a permanent structure and therefore have to be have to meet the the setbacks. Is that true or?
Under the current code?
Yeah.
Yeah, they would have to just meet all accessory building requirements in that case.
Okay, and I'll ask the rest of the question when you get to it.
So I've just included a couple of images showing you what what folks have done. You can see some are, you know, less the term that that is used, I guess, in the industry is clad to to put some siding on it. You can see this one on the right has has some has some siding and some some windows to it. Here's some more images. And again, these are offices and man caves and cheese sheds, whatever you'd want to call them that have been converted and kind of in backyard structures. I'll, I think we're, yeah, Brandon, I think we're going to show this video really quick to just show you how how it could be cited.
Yo, welcome to Continue Luxury. On this episode, we're going to be covering the siding. And there are a lot of different ways to do this. You could leave it if it was a brand new container. In our case, we're doing something a little different. And we're going to show you what we're doing and how to do it. Let's go ahead and get started. You're installing whatever type of siding you're you are installing. You're going to need something to screw to, and you want to make as few penetrations through this metal siding as possible. So when doing so, there's a lot of different ways you can do this, but this is just a simple way that we figured out to do it. We're using pressure treated two by six that we cut in half to turn it into only about two and three quarter inches wide each one. So it was the best way we can maximize the amount of material. So we've cut into size so they sit inside these valleys on the corrugated steel. So what we did was we just found that dimension right there on the in the middle, and we ripped these down to fit inside that. And what we're doing is using a really high quality adhesive, pretty much the same adhesive we're using everywhere, which is this lock type PL Pro. You get this over at Home Depot. We can link to it in the description for the video. But what we're doing is we're kind of taking the glue, and I'll actually do this one. So I've got one over here installed right now with that stuff. What I'll do is I'll actually take this glue and I'll put a stream right up the whole thing. And I like to do these little S turns, so I make sure it covers all over. And we go all the way up to the top, and I'm only five foot ten, not seven foot, so I won't get all the way up there unless I'm on a ladder. But what we do is then take this, stick it into that valley, and we're tacking a screw down at the bottom and one at the top. And then this glue, once it dries, there's actually a video where they took this glue, they glued something to the side of a container and then used a bottle jack and lifted it with only the glue. So this stuff is seriously stronger than nails or screws. So once this stuff dries, you don't have to worry about that coming off. And what we're going to do afterwards is still take the same glue and use it as a sealant. Down, once this thing's in here, we're going to run it down the sides and like hawk it in so that it seals it so no water can get behind it. Okay, so what we want to go ahead and do too, depending on the type of screw you use, we like these axe heads. They're just really, really heavy duty screws that are going through here. There have to be some type of coated or stainless or something that's not going to rust and corrode over time. Even though we're 100% really relying on that glue, you still want to make sure that just every part of it's built to last. So what you what you want to do is, you know, they grab really well when you can actually pull it through the wood. But just try and set them so they're not sticking out really far, so that when your next phase that goes over the top of this is sitting on that screw and causes something not to sit right. So just make sure you set it all the way, and that's also going to verify that it's really grabbed in. There's so many different variations of siding you can do. And what we went ahead and did is installed multiple different ones. You can see everything is installed over those wood two by threes essentially that we glued and screwed into the siding. We've got, we've got wood siding hung in groove that we nailed to our our nailers behind here. Then we switched over to galvanized roofing, which we started at the bottom and overlaps. All the water runs over the seams. You know, nothing can't get behind them. This galvanized roofing, again, is just screwed right into those those wooden pieces that we put behind and screwed into the metal. And then we got all of our aluminum window sills back to the galvanized steel. And then we put in a cool accent piece, which is all made out of, I believe this is PVC based, but it's truck's decking board. They're 100% waterproof, weatherproof, virtually maintenance free. Cool alternative. They're super expensive, $26 a board. So you got to make sure if you're using this that you're willing to pay for it. But we wanted to go as maintenance free as possible and also show you a variety of different sidings and what we can do, what you can do at home. So if there's anything we missed, if there's anything you want us to specifically cover as far as siding is concerned, make sure to hit those comments. Other than that, other than that, please subscribe to our channel and we'll see you on the next episode.
All right, so. Okay. All right. And then so so some other communities that allow shipping containers to be used as residential residential accessory buildings are listed here. I'm sure there are many more, but from from Utah, these are, these are some that I could find. And I know, I know, for example, Weber County, they allow them. They're kind of silent, though, on their ordinance. They don't really say. They just kind of allow them as more of a policy. I know South Ogden, Monticello, Lehigh, I know they all allow them to be used as residential accessory structures as long as they're not lived in. And there are some certain requirements that they have that that we'll go over a little bit later. But I noticed that there are also quite a few communities in Colorado that have that have recently allowed them to be used. I think probably as part of that trend. I know Salt Lake, a lot, there's a, there's a shipping container apartment complex in Salt Lake apartment building. And then there's also a shipping container home in a neighborhood in Salt Lake as well.
Steve, can you just throw the definition of the residential accessory? And what it is, is allowing or isn't?
Sure. So typically, residential accessory building means a building that is subordinate to the 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 primary dwelling that's on the property. So you want the house it to to be the the first thing that somebody looks at as you as you're driving by, but typically, it residential accessory building can be used for things related to that house. So things like storage of your equipment. It could be things like an office, a backyard office. A residential accessory building could be like a an indoor pool could be a residential accessory building. So again, things that are tied to people living in that house and and the use of of that as a as a residence. Oh, man. So open the so open the shipping container gods wouldn't make that flicker. Cool. So to give you an idea of cost, something I I looked at quite a bit is, you know, what what would it cost to have something like delivered and and set up at your house? And from what I what I've found is for like a smaller container, like your typical, you know, maybe a 20 foot or or 10 foot container as an office or storage in the backyard, you're probably looking at something like 10 to 20,000. And that's for you know, from from one of these companies to have it delivered. That's not, you know, that's probably not including, you know, the the land use permit, which is, I don't know, 100 bucks or something like that. And but it also, I I think that also includes, you know, site preparation and 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 having the the slab installed. And then as you get to the bigger containers, you're probably and and bigger and maybe more finished containers on the inside, you're probably looking closer to 30 or or 50,000. And then if you're going to put, you know, utilities in there, it's it's probably going to go up a little bit more from there. So this is the last slide. I'll just, I'll just go over some common requirements that that I've seen from the communities that allow them in their ordinances. Siding is is a common requirement. You either have to have siding or I've seen some that say, as long as you can't see it from the street, it's allowed. Putting roofing on it is is common, again, and not not for any snow load requirements, but just for aesthetic to make it look like it belongs in the neighborhood and look like it is part of that that house that's already there. I think every ordinance that I've seen that allows shipping containers, they've they've clarified that no stacking is allowed. As you might imagine, as you get higher up, it could could fall over and and become a safety issue. And then meeting all typical accessory building requirements, things like setbacks and height. It should generally look similar to the house. And then something I've seen, I can't remember which, it's probably Salt Lake, is not allowed in historic districts. That's something that you could look at doing or talk about, but generally with historic districts, there is a specific neighborhood quality that those homes in that neighborhood capture. And by allowing these, it it might not you might diminish that. And so that's, that's what I've got. Happy to answer any questions. And I'm sure council member Rich, you may have some things to say as well.
I just want to thank you, Steve. That was, I know that a lot of work kind of went into all the research and putting this together and appreciate all your time and effort there. And in our meetings, I think you presented everything we talked about very well here. So I think the, and I also want to recognize, we have Shane in the room. He's the constituent who brought this forward as a as a question. And so I appreciate his involvement and just mainly, you know, I think we do see a little bit of a trend of this happening across the country. And is this a way for us to get out ahead of some some things that may be coming anyway? And, you know, our our code, the way it reads, it didn't make a lot of sense to me to say, let's have this nice sound structure and put a building around it that would be weaker than the actual internal structure, probably. And so if there's a, if there's a viable way to to make them look good and and fit in the neighborhood with the siding and whatever, then it seems like it makes sense to me. So just wanted to bring it to the council to see how everyone else felt about that, if that's something we wanted to address. And yeah.
Is there a difference between an accessory building and a backyard storage shed? As far as city code and land use is concerned?
As long as the things that are stored in that backyard storage shed are related to the house, related to, you know, the living. They're storing, you know, things like old clothes or whatever would normally belong in that house and things like lawnmowers. But in my opinion, no, it'd be the same thing.
Okay.
I I think that there is a little bit of a difference in that, like if you went and bought a tough shed that had a wooden floor on the bottom, they could put it within a foot of the property.
Right. That's what I'm getting at. It's setbacks are different. And you can go up to 400 square feet, I believe, without a permit.
And size is a bit of an issue, too.
Yeah, no permit. So these all, even the longer one, the bigger one, falls under 400 square feet and would not require a permit if it were going to be used as a backyard storage shed.
That's, it wouldn't require a building permit. It would still require a land use permit, but that's correct. And I think state code says 350. And specifically, I think a two or a a 40 foot length container, I think that's about 350 square feet. So it wouldn't require a building permit under state code, but it would still require verification of setbacks, height, things like that through a land use permit.
You know, you can pick up used ones. They're all over the internet for about two grand. So what, do you have a feel, Ken, for what the most common use would be? Are you, do you anticipate there'd be man cave exterior office uses for these versus backyard?
Kind of what I would see is, yeah, it'd be man cave or even, you know, some shop, you know, you could store your tools in there and maybe run some electricity to it. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask him. I mean, I get that maybe it's more similar to a shed, but I think, why wouldn't we consider it also for a place for people to live as an accessory dwelling unit also?
Right.
Yeah. And I, and the only thing on that is that I was just, you know, maybe stepping at a time. That might be ultimately where we end up with it, but just you know, there's, there's going to be obviously a lot more building requirements, which we, you know, that that's fine. It would to plumb to it and and get electricity and.
Office, if it was an office, would it need that too?
I don't, I think when we talked about that, if the office doesn't, doesn't require a bathroom or.
And so typically, if it's a house, it has a kitchen, a bedroom and a bathroom.
Right, yeah.
But there are communities that.
Necessarily have kitchen, bed. Yeah.
Yeah, there are communities that allow them to be lived in. It would be important for somebody who wants to apply, you know, if it's allowed somebody who wants to apply for an accessory dwelling unit to be a shipping container. They would have to take on that responsibility of getting an engineer to stamp the plans. So it 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 probably would be a little bit more, I think, expensive than they realize because council member Graff, you're right. Um so it 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 probably would be a little bit more, I think, expensive than they realize, because council member Graff, you're right, you could find some that are really cheap. And someone might find one from a friend that, you know, get it, got it for free. And they're like, oh, sweet, I can live in this. Well, maybe, but you you have to get a building permit for it first to make sure things like ventilation aren't an issue and, you know, um insulating it and everything like that.
Um I was, I signed on to the council member initiative with council member Richie and and I do remember back uh when I was on the planning commission, that was a was brought to the planning commission to to have these, but I think it was in a I think it was brought to the planning commission because of it was enforced. Uh code enforcement had come and somebody just done it. And it wasn't done very well. So
Done what? Just put, just put
Put a bunch of, they, I think they actually had several in backyard.
Just put one back there. They weren't using it for any
Well, they were storing stuff in it.
Storing stuff, okay.
Yeah, they, they hadn't moved in or anything like that. They just, but it, but it did violate our ordinance. So a- and so I, I really think that there's a a s- a space for this in our ordinance to to allow it. But we do have to talk about how they are used. I I think that, you know, you, you mentioned the slab, is a slab required? Um even though, you know, they, they really have a solid floor underneath them. Um you know, that that might be a discussion point, square footage limit. Um are they considered a temporary or or a a permanent building for setbacks requirements? Is there a height limit? Um do we have, are we gonna require that they have a pitch roof so that they look like the house? Or if if that's the case, if that's, if that's kinda what's going on? Are they allowed to be used as an ADU? What if utilities are installed? I mean, there's a whole lot of things that need to be discussed to to make this work. But I think it can, but it's gonna, we're gonna have to go through all of those things, so.
I I might be the only one, but I've stayed in a storage shed or storage container up in Bear Lake. Somebody had one in their their house and that was what they had in the back. It didn't have, it had electricity. Um it had a little I think it had a hot plate. Didn't have a kitchen, but it had something, but it didn't have a bathroom. There was no, there was no bathroom.
Probably as good as staying in a yurt.
But yeah, it was, it was, it was very well done. Um there was quite a few of them. I always thought it was really nice and a really cool way to add another place to put people. So I I agree. I think it's, um I think there's, I think there's a place for it in our ordinance. Um and I think we can work through the rest, but but I I had a lovely evening at my night, but there, yeah.
You know, it might be nice to go back and find the
It was cool. We opened windows like slid open, like we opened windows. It was, it was nice.
If we went back to see what the, what the issues were in the past, that when it was brought this before, that was many years ago, but but they probably had some good questions that we need to address and answer, so.
I was just gonna also point out, I mean, we watched the video on the siding, which is just one option. Uh uh it seems like there are companies that are are building brackets that can be installed to to take on the siding or or put studs in so they can side it. So it it seems like there are innovative ways to 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 do this and the markets are moving that way. And so if it exists, you know, makes sense to try and update our our code to allow or make sure we can put our our stamp on how we want it to be allowed, I guess.
Think, and when we were, you know, working on the carriage house idea, we did look at the modular homes because at that time it was at the tail end of the pandemic and, you know, s- supply chain was so terrible. And that, you know, kinda reminds me of this because they basically just come and drop it and then, you know, plummet and do all this stuff. And obviously, it's a lot more than what this costs. But I think these could also range really high too, but it is really fast and efficient just to get something put in immediately, even if it has to have the cement pad. It could make it more attainable to many people because building the whole structure is very expensive, you know.
These can be above ground swimming pools too. I mean, but
Oh, yeah.
There's a little show on the, uh one of the, one of the shows, the how to show, how to do a show, called Building Outside the Lines. That guy uses these things for everything.
But not in Ogden.
No, he doesn't do it not.
Not yet, anyway.
So what, what's your suggestion of our next steps then? I mean, you, it sounds like there's some ideas that um council member Hire has.
Yeah, so the the kinda the purpose of this specific meeting was to just gauge the council's interest. It sounds like there's some interest, so um we'll work with uh the the experts um planning and and building and Jared to hopefully come, we'll, we'll come back to, I I think the the next step and as as outlined in the rules and norms says that um we'll come back with um kind of a plan on on how this, something like this could be implemented and all those things that council member Hire mentioned. Um yeah, th- those are things that the ordinance will will need to address. And I think working with the with the planning and in building, hopefully we can come up with a pretty good ordinance and so.
That's great. Well, thanks for bringing that.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. Good job, Steve. Alright, um we're at the council comments. I do. I didn't know it's it. I didn't, yeah. That that would be great. I didn't know if that's why he was here, so. So Brian, if we could have you come up, um we we had, um I think I remember, was it last week?
Yeah, at least I'm a constituent.
Um we, we had last week a, an issue that came up with, um I mentioned that uh I had not received an email um from a constituent and I was looking on my computer and couldn't find it. And um so I know that um council member Richie, council member Chaburka also had some concerns about the same thing, knowing that this person probably did reach out to us. Um can you give us, I mean, I think there's a lot of questions we may have of you, but can you give us just an idea of what happened and maybe how or what we can do to prevent that and um
Yeah, yeah. So uh let me give you just a little overview about a junk email filter with as regard to spam and and filters. So Ogden City does have a spam and malicious filter for emails. Um it it, I'll give you some rough numbers of kinda things that goes through. Eleven thousand, ten to fifteen thousand is an average email count that it goes through every single day. So it's pretty accurate. It's pretty good. It is enterprise grade. It's from Microsoft um and the Office three sixty five suite, but it is not perfect. It's not a hundred percent. So um it does these by looking at known and malicious or maybe maybe even not malicious, just spam, right? Um it can be either or. And and it puts it into two categories. Um it's either going to be known malicious and that would be give it a competence rating, hundred percent known malicious. And that will not even be delivered to your mailbox. That will be put into a quarantine. Uh and then there's ones that it might be on the fence about, maybe eighty five, seventy five percent uh sure that it might be spam, it might not be. I need someone to look at it. And that's where we'll end up in junk mail.
How those things get determined?
Yeah, yeah. So it it learns. Um Microsoft has some preset of rules in the spam filter and others do too, but it learns from uh common things that it sees of, if it sees the same email addresses that come in or people you talk to or um it actually does crowdsourcing through Microsoft with known um malicious actors of how they might craft an email. And it learns those types of uh, you know, what's the newest trends and it might read into those kinda things. So it's all always ever evolving as well.
So if if I'm, if I get a bunch of email from places I don't like and I market a spam in my, in my thing, is it, is it, is that building it up to be marked as spam worldwide?
It does. It um it 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 would take a lot to, you know, be, make it worldwide, right? But it does in that way. It's called machine learning.
It turns it into, it turns it on the blacklist and and you may not even know it.
Yep, yep, that's correct. And so it it does that so imperfectly, right? It does really good, like ninety two percent plus. Um but there are some that get caught and sometimes they'll go to junk mail. Um and that's not just of of Ogden City or anything here, but that's the nature of the technology everywhere, Gmail and everywhere else, right in the public. Um so I haven't seen the specific e- email that that you have looked at, but I'd be happy to go into it. If you want some more details, I'd be happy to trace that through and um get you some details around that. But you'll typically either find them um in your junk email folder. And that means that it was a determined that, hey, I need a human to interpret. It's may or may not be. It has a reason to believe and a reason to maybe not as well. It might be good. Um a- and then there's others that if it's a hundred percent known malicious, there's a virus in this, then it will not deliver it to your mailbox. And the only way you could get that is uh if IT were to deliver it and it passed everything else and we could prove that it was not malicious, but we've yet to have that happen, so.
Another question then, I I once in a while get something from Microsoft, so we got this email and it was quarantined?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what that is, exactly what that email. So if it's quarantined, that's means it was not delivered to your mailbox, but it wants your input. It wants to go, hey, this is a a high likelihood that I I think it's spam, but I have, maybe there's fifteen percent or twenty percent. It's right on the edge of you might wanna double check it. I don't wanna not deliver it, but I have a high hu- chance, the probability that this is spam. Uh that's what the quarantine means versus junk mail. Um and so that that's kinda how our our filters work. That's the way it's set up um currently. And of course, there is always, if there's um ones that you're having reoccurring issues with, there's always whitelist or blacklist um to, that we can train it on as well. So we can always help you with those things.
So I have two questions.
Yeah.
First, um I know that we recently switched from OgdenCity.com to OgdenCity.gov. I don't, it didn't seem like this happened earlier. Maybe it did and we just weren't aware of it, but does this have anything to do with that switch over?
There actually one, so i- as far as a mail filter, they go through the same one.
Okay.
Um so yeah, the dot gov, it goes through OgdenCity.gov, dot com, OgdenTrails.com, CI.Ogden.UT.us, which is an older one. Um not longer in use, but uh there's a few of them that are, that are actually done in the same way and none of that changed. Um the 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 things that changed were actually stuff outside of it, DNS records.
And then another question, like I under, I can understand if it was sent, if 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 an email was trying to be sent to me personally or an email was trying to be sent to every Ogden City user, but this was sent to like seven individuals? I would think that would kinda prove that it's not, or that it's important, right? That there's, they're sending it to seven people. So is there a way to
So, so
gauge that better?
Yeah, I totally understand where you're coming from. Um but at the same time, o- on the other hand, if I was um malicious, that's, those are common things that you'd see them do, right? They would be able to send it to multiple seven people. Um you know, I might go to the public website and see everybody's email here in this room and I might try to spam, yeah. Um or you you do you see how it could be used in both ways, I guess? So it doesn't always guarantee that it would do it one way, but to answer your question, yes, we can absolutely help train those things.
Okay.
Um as you find them, if you would could, would let me know some of the email addresses, cause it looks at a lot of different things. We could be here for a long time going over details, but longer the shorter, it looks at content, it looks at the way it was, it was written. If it's a really long chain, I've seen um where there are replies, you usually see kinda go back and forth as it gets really long. Sometimes that can trip it up and it gets a higher likelihood that it might market as spam incorrectly, right? So just things like that. There's a lot of factors that play into those, but we can absolutely uh help to determine those. If you can identify those, you find them and we can absolutely help to to uh, they're they're always evolving, cause so are the spammers that try to get in. They're always changing the way they do things and so are the filters. And so it's always kind of a a a balance we're trying to to strike. So as, if we're known about them, we can certainly help make them better.
Um I'm just curious, um oh, now there's someone there. Let's see, I'm, um when I was first looking, it didn't look like I had junk email on, you know, getting it to my iPad, but it looks like I do have it now. So do you recommend that we look through the junk email to help prevent this from happening?
Yes, I I would. I would get in that habit of looking at at junk email. Um I I know on on, I have an iPhone.
It's actually, yeah, I just found it in there.
Oh, perfect.
But I don't ever look at the junk email in there.
It's, I I have the same thing, cause I have an iPhone as well. And you have to go back in there and it's, it's kind of hidden a little bit, I feel like. Um but it is a good habit to to get a hold of. If you've ever signed up for some new service and they say, check your email for a code. Um and they, it might say, check your spam box.
Yeah, I've never looked at that junk email.
It's, it it's a good idea too, but if you find things that are not junk in there, not only can you mark it as not junk, but if you find reoccurring things,
Yeah, that'll help.
Please let me know. We can help you get through that. We can whitelist certain names.
Forty five in there though. So does it empty out? Does it empty out periodically or?
It'll give you time to do so. Um not until it fills with space. So it's not a certain time where it's like limited.
Mine says thirty days.
Yeah, mine has thirty days.
Oh, perfect, okay. Yeah, then yours, yep.
Okay, well, that is really good to know, cause I've never looked at that folder before.
So and and to, oh, also, if you don't see it in your, that your, cause you're, that's the client on the iPad specifically. So if it goes past the third days and you know about it, we can still look them up and and help you identify them, get them. Um so they're not, they're not gone completely. That's just a uh client side, so.
So Brandon did look into this a little bit too. And so there is two settings. It can either be thirty days or it can be n- no limit. So you might wanna go in and set, if you're not planning to check your junk mail re- regularly, and I would say every week or two.
Yeah.
Um then if you then set it on no limit and that way you you always, you're not gonna lose anything. I guess that's what I'm saying.
And you could, you can always change that retroactively as well. So if you, um if you find that thirty days is not enough and you go turn that on, it will download it for all the history, not just, it just shows it to save space on your local device. Thirty days is the default. But the the mail is actually still in your inbox up in the cloud. So it'll just download. Um it's under exchange settings. So depending on your phone in the exchange settings, yeah. And and if you use Windows, it's gonna be a little bit different. Outlook would have a little bit different. Um uh Apple would have a little different setting, but they're, they're in there and you can, you can actually set that, yep, just like maybe soon.
Yeah, and just, I think, Ken, you mentioned that you didn't have any junk mail, but as we learned, it takes a minute to populate, especially if you haven't been checking it, so.
Yeah, I found just a couple other correspondents in here, people asking me questions, so.
If you see repeat things and as you mark them as not junk.
Yeah, I've never looked in that at all. And I'm, I'm, yeah, so.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna clarify that if you see those, when you mark them as not junk, that helps train it um a bit. But if you're seeing repeat offenders, please let me know and I could be happy to whitelist those for you so they don't end up there and help you not have to look in there so often.
Sorry, Jacob K.
Um and then there's, there's also, just to to be clear, when the the quarantine, like that quarantine email you talked about that you got versus your junk mail and the differences between those two are the confidence level. So they may, you may see one or the other or both and uh we can help you in either direction. And you can also use that email that it says and say, this is not junk right on that email. And it does the exact same thing. It'll take it out of quarantine and deliver it to your mailbox.
I was gonna say, the other, the, the, this isn't, doesn't impact if somebody submits an email through the website, right? If they go onto OgdenCity.gov, isn't there a a place where you can submit a request or submit an email to the council? That's not just a regular at OgdenCity.gov? Isn't, is there a, cause it seems like we get some occasionally forwarded.
Well, I think they're just going to the website and there is a link to your Ogden City Council, your OgdenCity.gov account. So they're just clicking on that. So it's not, it's, it's still going through the, I assume, still going through the whole email process. When they click on it, it's there, that's not bypassing.
Yeah, that'll just open there.
The city council email, right?
So that was another, cause you know, I kept, one council member said, well, I don't wanna have to check my junk mail. And I've said, well, the only other option would be to take your dot Ogden.gov accounts off the website and have them only use the city council at city council or Ogden.gov account. Um because then staff can do the maintenance on the junk and spam. We couldn't think of any other else, uh ways to avoid.
I think too, I mean, it it might be worth, I mean, if we want to on our main website, but what I've been telling people now since I learned of this problem, if you don't hear back within a certain amount of time, call or, and all of our phone numbers are on the websites too. And obviously, I mean, some of them serve, I can't always answer the phone during the day, but a text works really great. I mean, I know everybody's different, but to, I mean, it puts extra onus on those residents, but just just in case they don't hear from us, just try again, yes.
There's always that possibility. Um to give, to give you some stats, just for for last year, for example, uh i- if we turned off spam filtering completely, you, uh ninety foot plus percent of emails that we, that OgdenCity.gov or dot com receives are filtered as one hundred percent spam. So they don't even deliver to your mailbox. Uh uh there are, it's not, it's not a hundred percent perfect. And there are these ones that that slip through, but as we train, train it, I'm confident it can get better. Um especially the ones we regularly communicate with, it starts to learn and know these things like this is acceptable. Let's let it go.
So I think it's interesting too, cause I used the search and I I searched for this person's email and couldn't find it at all. I mean, so it didn't even come up in spam or junk or anything. And I thought that was interesting from the client. I mean, so it didn't even come up in spam or junk or anything, and I thought that was interesting from the client's side, which is, I'm assuming this is a, it it's a client.
Yes, yeah. So the clients, um, are you, looks like you have an Apple. Are you using Outlook or what, what's your client?
I'm just that calendar.
The mail?
Yeah.
App, okay. So sometimes there are uh settings in in mail or Outlook. I know specifically we just. Uh, I usually use Outlook a lot, so I can, I can tell you that one for sure. You have to go in and actually uh tell it exactly what you wanted to search for. And junk isn't one that's defaulted. So I would assume there might be something with that, but I'd I'd have to look in some details for that, but.
That might.
Um, that might be a help, help to you.
That'd be great if you could.
Include that by default.
Cause I know I looked on my.
It's a setting, is you're saying that's a setting?
Yeah, there's usually settings in the client. The client.
Yeah.
Does what's called indexing for quick searching. Um, and that might be a setting on your specific client or your iPads or or something that we might be able to to look at. To.
That would be great, cause I know I looked on my iPad and my iPhone and it didn't show up anywhere.
Yeah, it usually keeps the junk like separate, um, what junk, right? The the ones that ended up in in the junk mail for took for review. Uh, and that that can be, yeah, if you don't check it regularly, it can, it is in some, some areas we'll call it spam, some will call it junk. Um, but it it kind of, the terms wanted the same for this purpose.
Any other questions? I, you, I guess I um, I I just want to, you know, again, I'm I'm not gonna, I. I don't want to apologize for not missing or not having it. On the other hand, I wanted to make sure that we followed through because I didn't want to have this happen again. And so um, I I didn't know that I didn't have it, so I guess that, you know, I tried a few different ways, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good question.
We give so many emails in our regular email, um, but sometimes I miss somebody's correspondence too, cause in this junk, I think I have forty-five messages in here. Three were from constituents, um, including Brooke, but then um, all the rest are like sales things. So it's like, it's helpful on one hand, but on the other hand, I had no idea to look there, so I hope I wasn't missing three every month, but you know, I don't know.
If you find three of the same person, that's a great, like.
It's three different.
Three different.
That were in there that were from constituents, so.
So so we we'd be happy to, like, if you're there known constituents and you're expecting those emails, we 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 can absolutely be happy to help you. Uh, train those and even whitelist them for you, so that it doesn't happen continuing, moving forward. But that won't always change for new ones.
Yeah.
Just the email address itself.
So just moving it out of the junk box won't do that for the learner?
It will, but if I go whitelist it, it'll do an immediate for you. Yeah, it would, it, you could do both. And it would, it would do, but but if you send it, it would make a hard whitelist rule of this, to see this, it's allowed to get to you.
Okay.
That's great.
It would bypass.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we do definitely hear from some of the recurring people, but I think with every different issue, it's all different, to me.
Yeah, you might hear from new people. It's something to be, still be cognizant of, cause they might get a new email address or it's a new people. Um, that have new email addresses and then they'd be subject to the same filter and depending on uh the the filter, it it may or may not get caught. Again, it's it's pretty good, not a hundred percent. Um, so it's it's something to be aware of and cognizant of.
Somebody also, I asked if we would be able to find the ones that we were missing and I don't know how we would do that. I mean, uh.
You'd have to have the email.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we would need to know if you knew of one. We'd have to have an email address. That's the easiest way. Or sometimes we're able to search if you know um any specifics about a date and time, subject line. Um, maybe even keywords sometimes can help, not always, but it it definitely narrows, anything you can give to narrow it down. Um, but if you know a certain email address, that's a real easy way to get a good result.
So if we, if we had you to search Aspen Care Facility or that's something that you may be able to pull up and see.
Oftentimes, um, I would probably ask for, you know, like a timeframe, because that might return a whole ton of results. So the the things to narrow it down from there, but yeah, that's a, those are things that are all possible. Another possibility is like, we kind of already mentioned, you're looking at thirty days of the junk, but it actually goes back. Through your whole existence of its mu- lifetime, so maybe we we take the down, let it download and then let you search that way. And that might be an easier, quicker way than just keywords, but all good options that we could uh it help out with in another direction.
Great.
So ju- just for the public and for me, and others can chime in on their own. I want the public to know that in no way, shape or form am I desirous of evading anybody's effort to communicate with me. Uh, my telephone number is posted on our website. I hand my cell phone number out freely. My email address is available. Um, you can stop me on the street. If I don't respond to you, it's not because I don't want to talk to you. I do, that's my job in this role. Um, so please, if if I'm not responsive, find another way to get to me. And one of those ways is just to email the city council office or call the city council office and leave a message for me. And people will track me down uh if somehow you're blocked from getting to me. Um, so please know that I'm available and I'm here to hear my constituency in the public. In my representation of the city.
I just want to ask a question. So how often do you all check your city email? Daily?
Several times a day.
Cause another idea we had was maybe just putting something on our website that on the wits, on the page that has your app. Your contact information, just saying, you know, maybe you should request a read receipt. So that, and then if you don't get that, then maybe they can, they know that you haven't opened it yet. And then they can start these other efforts to try and contact you. So we could do that if that, if you think that would be helpful.
Brian, do all the um email servers now have that capability to require a a read receipt?
Um, I wouldn't say all of them, but it is very common, most.
So would that be automated? I guess I don't know. We write back and say, hey, I read this.
Yeah, you would get a notification that would say, kind of like, um, you know, if you use iPhone texting, right? You see that it's read or delivered, a status of it. Um, it it's kind of like that, so you can, on an email, you can request a read receipt. And then if I were to send an email to.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Councilman Graff, then I would get, I would say, request a read receipt. And then when he opened that up, I would get an email that said, he opened it up. Um, and so there's, there's an idea there. There's also some other things like, you know, we we whitelist those. We could also make a notification of some sort if you felt appropriate for when something goes to your junk, you get at least a notification of it. Um, I'd worry a little bit about just kind of even your stats there. Forty, you get forty-five notifications and three were legit. Um, that that might get real noisy, so those are the the potential risks, I guess, but those are all options we have. And I I I really like the read receipt idea to try. Um, but I would, I I support your effort, Councilman Graff. In in uh getting anybody that wants to get a hold of you. Uh, it's it's certainly not intentional that we're, that anything's being blocked in spam. And the more we know about it, the better we can uh help to make that.
Yeah, and I do, I mean, I think uh along with, you know, like, even if I don't agree with a person, I'll say, thanks so much for reaching out. I appreciate you contacting me. Or something like that. I try to at least get back. The only time I have been reluctant to do that is when it's like a template. Because then we get so many of those at a time, that's hard, but the read receipt I think would be good for that too, because I do look at those. It's just, it's hard to respond to every single person that writes. That one is a lot.
I I also think that it's hard too when all of us are on the same email, because maybe you respond and.
Yeah.
I've read it and you've responded, so I don't know whether I should respond it.
And sometimes I don't want to respond to everybody, so I think I've got enough email, yeah.
So you, that might be harder to.
But if it's coming to your individual account, you're the only one that's getting it, right? I mean, I guess in this case, she sent the same email to every one of you.
Right.
But she wants to also hear from everyone.
Right, but I'm I'm saying when there's seven of us on the same email.
Sometimes like, but I don't usually, maybe we just make that part of our council norms. That might be an idea. As if you respond, copy everybody, so at least they know that they got a response. I don't know. I think I kind of decide based on the issue, like whether you all would want to know what I say or not.
And I'm probably the the odd one. I I pre- really prefer to talk to people rather than to email back and forth. And sometimes they don't leave their phone number. One of those, so if you're gonna put something on the city's website. Recommend people leave their phone number or or just reach out my phone too. I I, that's my preferred method of doing that, so.
Thanks for coming.
Of course, yeah.
Cause I think there was some. Um, some har- hurt feelings from some people that felt like they reached out over an important issue and didn't get a response. Um, from anyone, so I appreciate knowing more about it. Um, but I also think that it's good that we learned that. It wasn't an isolated person that that was, that was sent to junk mail also, that there was. I mean, in in one month, we had three people, so so yeah, there is, there there is some quirks we need to work out, but I appreciate you.
Yeah, yeah, of course, anytime. Um, and and like I said, we've looked into make it as as good as we can and the more data we get, the better uh it it absolutely gets. And uh, we will always shoot for that hundred percent. So let me know if there's anything else I can do to help.
No, thanks for coming.
Thank you for the time.
So I was gonna make a couple of announcements before we do the the RDA thing. Um, so just a reminder, the OCAP uh open house, which is the twenty-eighth. Um, I think one person is has RSVP'd and so if you are able to go, just let Mavis know. She can RSVP for you or you can do it directly. Um, then uh, as you re- you might remember off the calendar, we had planned to do a strategy session next week. At the, at the fire station. Um, the administration as as requested that we move up the. New markets tax credits discussions. So we will have a work session next week. And we'll start at four here at this, at this building. Uh, will be a public discussion about the new markets tax credits and how they're proposing to use. Those to get additional funding for the Marshall White Center. So any questions about that?
Just a work session?
Or just a work session, no meeting? Yeah, and that, thanks. We'll move the strategy session to uh April twenty-second. In April, there is actually five Tuesdays, so you'll still get a week off in in April, so. And depending on uh the timing, we're we're trying to, we're trying to work within the timing of the. CDFI, CDFA. Um, and so depending on that, we may end up having a quick call. Um, if we need to, for a vote. What day did we decide?
Actually, we're gonna vote on the first.
Okay. Never mind.
We need to get some wrangling and.
It's okay. All right, there we have it. Yeah, be my guest. Go get your food. Sure. Okay. We'll do that. So there's a few of us gathering here. It's all right. Okay, um, really, this is um just an opportunity to start a discussion. And get some direction from the council on, or excuse me, the board, redevelopment agency board on how, where you'd like to go with this. So this came to my attention. Um, Sarah made a presentation. Um, probably with the Forest Service Building and in her presentation, she said. The Ogden Ogden Redevelopment Agency has adopted these values. Um, to establish a baseline to inform goals and opportunity framework to direct resource investment, project consideration. And that's included in the annual report. And uh, actually, the board has never adopted those. I think those, this, these came out of discussions with the administrative staff. And I think that it's a really great place to start, but I thought it it is a good thing for the board to to evaluate this. And really, a couple of options, so um, going forward, we could either just adopt what they. Have proffered and we'll go through that in a minute. Uh, we could let, I could do some polishing. You know, maybe make a few changes in the language, but leave it essentially the same, the same basic um direction. Um, or we could go into a much deeper uh um discussion. You know, evaluation about what the RDA should be doing and and that might take some time to kind of work through. Creating an emission statement, identifying the values, identifying the language that you'd like included in those values. To to direct uh the decision-making decisions, the decision-making that you have to do. So. Um, so the mi- Wrong button. This is the mission. Uh, and normally I hate it when people hand me stuff and read it to me, but I'm still gonna read that to you. Ogden holds within its core an assemblage of historic, cultural, recreational and natural assets that are unmatched along the Wasatch Front. The Ogden City red- redel- redevelopment agency envisions capitalizing on those assets to close fiscal and physical gaps. Within the city through targeted investment and transformative redevelopment of underutilized parcels. To build a thriving community that improves the lives of Ogden residents and bolsters the city's financial health, stability and prosperity. So I, this is actually very much like the str- the mission statement in this five-year strategic plan. It's, it touches on a lot of the same things. I'm not sure who decided that a mission statement can only be one sentence. Because I I would break that up a little bit if I were rewriting it, um, to make it a little easier to read. But um, anyway, thoughts about the mission statement, just keep that in mind um as we kind of move forward. So here's the values that they identified, real estate and land use, historic and cultural assets, transportation and mobility. Parks and open space, and then social equity and essential services. Um, and then this is the purpose, which I I read to you at the beginning, uh basically to use uh in the decision-making process. So for each of the values, um, the CED staff has gone through and highlighted the things that they would do. Um, and weigh the things, the projects that are coming forward against. Um, to meet this value or to to substantiate the value. So identify key redevelopment zones, uh, you know. Know how to to consolidate, you know, vacant, underutilized properties, focus on the value. Um, and then with the intent of trying to increase the city's tax base. For historic and cultural assets, you know, identifying, preserving and cel- celebrating those historic and cultural assets. Capitalizing the significance of that, prioritizing design standards. Uh, and placing greater significance on adaptive reuse and strategic infill and around those infill places.
Can I ask a, maybe it's a stupid question, what what is a, what is the definition of a cultural asset?
Um, I, it could be, I mean, what pops into my mind is um being unfort. It's not there, but we still recognize the importance of that area. That's how I would kind of cage it, but I don't know.
I just wondered, I thought it seemed a little nebulous and I, I wonder if maybe we could kind of come up with a finer point on some of these things.
Right. Okay. Uh, transportation and mobility. So talks about complete streets. You know, mobility options that are balanced, that we're meeting the level of service people need. There's amenities like bike lanes and bike facilities. Um, and then focus on development with limited surface parking. And creating that regionalized parking with connections to multi-mobile public transit. So that's transportation mobility. Parks and open space, just focusing on the quality and programming there. And with the uh, effort to attract new residents, businesses because of those amenities. And social equity and essential services. So just make sure we're increasing access to services. And you know, schools, daycare, grocery stores, open space, attainable housing, community centers. So that basically all, these are all geared toward creating um, a, a better, a more competitive city. Uh, if you recall, Brandon always talked about the competition that we're, that Ogden is up against all of the time. Uh, in getting new businesses and getting, you know, higher-end residential, all of that. So those are the, the key things that they've identified. And so again, as I mentioned upfront, we're just looking for direction on whether you want to just adopt these as is, if you want us to polish them up a little bit and adopt them then in basically the same format. Or have us start a longer discussion. And we would include the administrative staff in that, those discussions as well to come up with basically a rewrite. Or um, at least double checking to make sure that these are really the areas that you want to focus on.
Go ahead. Oh, I thought you were gonna.
I just wondered if um, on the administrative side of the fence, if there's um, or the line, we don't do fences here. Um, on the administrative side, is there anything missing? Are they being constrained by the, the outline that we just reviewed? And if so.
So maybe we can invite David or Sarah, I don't know, or Jared. Yeah. Uh, and could one of you maybe share your microphone with Jared, please?
Thank you. Um, no, I, I'm super appreciative of this conversation and for you bringing this up. And I'll kind of get to that question about, you know, what are we missing or are we missing anything? But I, I, I mean, I guess my request or recommendation would be, I'd kind of like to continue um, take all of these things. I would love to have a discussion overall. Um, a lot of these things came about during um, the Make Ogden Plan and the things that were going on at that time. And that's when these kind of got implemented and put in here. But as we're seeing right now, um, relaying back to the presentation that you had at the beginning of the work session. And the comment and the feedback that we're getting from the community, not only from that, but from Zonogden, from the general plan, from all of these different things. I would love the opportunity to work together with the council staff. Um, to look at all of the comments and the feedback that we're getting. And then make sure that these items that we're identifying align with what the community is also asking for. Um, and to help identify what areas have we not been focusing on or what are we missing? And what are we not including in those as we go? And so definitely, I'm not trying to put it out there that we make this this really long, overdrawn process that takes forever. But I'd love to have an intermediate step where we could kind of take all of that information, put it together. And then identify, do we still feel like these are the most appropriate areas? Or what do we need to add to them? Or how do we need to modify those?
I would agree. I also, um, this is just a random thing, but I uh, talking to other council members last week, they're, they are actually changing their name from the RDA to the CRA. And I don't know if that, this would be an opportunity to explore that or not. I don't know. We want to go down that road or not.
What's, what's the difference? It's redevelopment agency in the community. Reinvestment area board.
Redevelopment area.
I also think something like that wellbeing survey, some of those elements. So I was thinking about even for like, I talked to Brandon a lot about that social equity piece and that could even change into community wellbeing, you know, cause it's a little bit, that's what it's about, is having access to those different things and different way to talk. I love, I would love that idea.
And one other thought is that it talked a lot about uh, attracting new residents and, but I think some of the stuff in a redevelopment area actually helps retain the people that are here. And so I, I'd like to maybe have some wording around retain, retention as well. But I agree with you. I think exploring it a little bit more would be great.
Okay. Um, so we'll get with the administrative staff and decide how we want to move forward from there in terms of staff to staff work. And uh, and come prepared to bring something back to you for further discussion at a later date, hopefully sometime this year. So, okay. Thank you very much.
The timing does seem perfect to evaluate that right now. I'd support that a hundred percent.
We have time um, for me to talk about the um, the stuff we got in our email about the housing and all that. We have time for that tonight. I don't want to interrupt if you have something else. Um, I think that everybody got this email. If you didn't, check your junk folder. But it was from that um, AmeriCorps service person that was working with Salt Lake City. And their housing stability. And I, I mean, in those reports, um, I just really appreciated it. So just an overview for people that haven't seen those, but it basically was a survey that was done with housing advocates. Legal services groups and the, and um, advocates for communities that are living in, you know, in pretty low incomes. And affordable housing and property manager. So lots of different stakeholder groups, which I really appreciated. Um, and I think you can really look at the executive summary and get the high points of it, but then I kind of dug into some of the other items. And I asked Chris um, from OCAP actually to come a little bit early because um, we were involved in a project with OCAP where they were trying to distribute some rental assistance. And it kind of speaks to some of these issues that are in the report. Um, cause it is really focused on renters primarily in the report, but I do feel like it's a really important time. Much like when we were in the pandemic where people with mortgages, people that are feeling uncertain about their future. If they get impacted by maybe losing their employment, a lot of times people don't know the resources that we have in the community that actually can help them. Because they've never had to go get those before, right? It's an unusual situation for them. So I think that some of the, this information actually applies to people that have mortgages too. Um, for example, a lot of times when you don't know how you're going to pay everything, right? You start to balance your different things and you don't reach out to someone to tell them. And in this report, it really says, you know, tenants just freeze also. And so they just don't do anything. Um, and so then they go down this long path of getting evicted and that just really impacts their lives overall. Um, and in the project we are working on, um, the Weber Housing Homeless Trust, I think that's what it's called. Um, gave a fund of money to OCAP to distribute for rental assistance because we know one of the most impactful things of keeping people from, you know, experiencing homelessness is to keep them housed when they're in a crisis situation. And so this rental assistance was really meant to help people with, you know, just that one month of rent that you need. Um, just an emergency case based on a lot of things going on in people's lives. And one thing that I found very surprising, although we've heard this many times before too. Is that almost half of the people that applied for the rental assistance weren't eligible because their rent is not sustainable over time. And that was one of the caveats is that it wasn't just like a one-time thing that was causing this problem for them. It's that their rents are so high, it's not sustainable for the long, long term. So if you think about maybe around sixty-five households applying and half of them weren't able to get the rental assistance, the emergency rental assistance because of that issue. So anyway, I just invited them in case you all have any questions for them. Um, but I did think that there's several other things that we've kind of talked about before too, that were really, you know, I don't know how much we can do about it, but there was um, the report from advocates that low-income and rental um, households really have a lot of pessimism about, or lack of optimism, I'm sorry. And from participants around how much the local government cares about them or what they do to help support them. Um, the high cost of rent is a problem, but also the deposits and the fees even just to get into a household is really challenging. And then if you get into a situation where you start to have late fees and other kinds of fees, they just build up really fast. Um, so that's a big challenge for renters. And there is certainly predatory practices that are out there too. So um, one challenge that we found even a couple of years ago, when um, Professor Nagy was doing that hous- housing advocacy, right? Is that a lot of times people just don't know how to deal with these problems. They'll ask friends or family instead of going to an expert about it. So that's what's great about an organization like OCAP or others in our community that can help people get real information about what you do when you're in those situations. So that you don't go down a path that is going to cause you more problems. Because a lot of times, you know, though, if something's wrong in the apartment, people will think, oh, I just won't pay my rent. I'll fix it. But in our system, that actually doesn't work. You have to keep paying your rent. And there's other ways that you can advocate to get those things done. So that's important. Um, I also thought, you know, this is a, an issue and it's hard for us as a municipal government to really um, deal with this. But something that we could advocate for at the state level is renters really have a, a lack of rights, right? There's a lack of that and also their knowledge about it. Um, I also thought it was interesting that um, from property managers and advocates that landlords could use some education too about helping to support their um, tenants. And that um, one suggestion was that, you know, although there's some good things in the good landlord program. That sometimes, you know, unintentionally, this sort of thing happens all the time where actually it's having a disproportionate impact on domestic violence victims because they're, they're um, the people that are hurting them will use that against them and do extra calls on the apartments. And in the good landlord program, if you get a certain amount of calls, then you're evicted, right? So that's just one of the, you know, negative things that's in there. Um, and obviously, you know, there is a lack of ki- case management, you know, people to help people navigate these problems. And there's a lot of turnover in that sector too. Um, and so then that makes it challenging because there's not many um, avenues to protect tenants when they're getting exploited by their landlords, which does happen to people will raise rents or not take care of things. And so then the people feel threatened when they're in the apartment to bring up issues because then they're worried that they'll get evicted, right? So that's a challenge. Um, anyway, so I think that it's well worth looking over that and to think about. Um, you know, is there anything that we could do as a community? Because although I know it is one of our goals to decrease the amount of renters. We do have a large proportion of renters already and we should be making sure that we're advocating for them. But also, um, they were pointing out because of all kinds of reasons that that might actually increase. You know, we might increase having more and more renters too. So that's all I wanted to say, but I just thought it was well worth reading through that, that stuff. And I'll, I'll fill out the survey because the um, AmeriCorps person asked us about a survey to, you know, see if we looked at the reports or how we might use it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I mean, I'm just giving you what we have in our inbox, but.
That, that's a lot of stuff too.
It was a lot, yeah. I appreciated how it was broken down. I thought it was pretty easy to read.
Thanks. Yeah, I think going forward, that'd be great to look at, um, if there's any policy or even at the state level, to see if there'll be anything we could support on that. That would be great. Any other items? All right. We have five minutes. What?